And it is time for our study session. James, do we have all of the counselors? Not sure. Started. Alrighty, I have item nine and I am going to withdraw that one.
Thank you, Madam President. I have item number 10 and 11. If the clerk can remind, I believe we're still holding 10. Am I right, Mr. Clerk?
Yes, Counselor Bay, 10 has to be held for the public hearing on the 28th.
Right, and number 11 is already, Madam President.
Thank you. Counselor Rudd.
Thank you, Madam President. Of my items 12 through 18, 13 and 14, we're going to discuss an executive session after this. All the rest are ready, but 15, I'd like to take a minute to discuss. 15 is the capital collection management. I know there were, there was an email with some answers to the questions we had the last study session. So I just wanted to give that some time for counselors to ask additional questions or clarify. Frank, do you want to summarize what you sent in the email really quick?
Certainly, so this is the second in a four-step process. The first step, the council approved us sharing parking data with, with CCM to see if the data that we had on file was compatible with a collections system and whether we had the right information to even consider using a third party. The second step is the step that we're asking for approval now, which is to evaluate whether those fines that are on file, the receivables are actually collectible. You know, given that the city's not attempted this in a long time, I think it's a pretty open question as to whether, whether those are collectible. We've carried them as collectible on the books at the city for, for a long time and, and I think it's open to, to question whether they are actually collectible. The, 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 the step then will be for CCM to work in a very compressed timeframe, 120 days just to, to determine that and then make this the, the, the final piece in the, the amnesty rollout. And then the fourth step, once that evaluation has taken place in 120 days, to make a decision that it's really a, a three-headed decision. Do we just drop it and say those dollars are uncollectible? I hope that's not the case. Do we go with a third party and do a full-blown RFP for a third-party collector? Or do we build a, a first-party in-house collection process? And we'll know at the end of the 120 days, I think we'll be able to come back to the council and give you a clear picture on which of those three paths we should take.
Can you speak to the value of waiving the RFP process or not having the RFP process for the pilot? Like the, explain the need for the pilot in order to have an RFP or however you see it?
Yeah, I, I, I think it's twofold. The first was the compressed timeframe. We really needed, you know, the amnesty was a carrot and stick and we needed the, the carrot of waiving the penalties and we needed the stick of we're going to go into a formal collections process, which the city has not done literally for, for decades as we saw based on the age. So A, it was a compressed timeframe and B, I didn't feel, and, and in talking to CCM and others in the industry and talking to the, the folks at our parking violation bureau, that we even had enough information to, to do an RFP. Let, you know, set aside the timeframe. We just don't know whether this, whether these fines are worth collecting. And, and asking somebody to go through investment that it would take them to build an RFP seemed counterproductive to getting a, a quick answer and then taking the, the full collections process to RFP.
Frank, I, I, I have a problem inasmuch as that, that we didn't go through the RFP process. I understand your arguments here. I'm wondering, I'm just a little leery of embarking upon this without any, without any apparent experience that this company has in collecting anything or as far as the municipality goes. And it seems like we have a dearth of information regarding other municipalities and how they do it. I did, Martha did send me some, some information regarding some sister cities we have, the cities adjacent to us in the state. But I don't, I really don't see why we couldn't have done an, at least a request for proposal, maybe not a competitive bid.
And I, I, yes. I, I appreciate the concern, Counselor. I certainly, you know, I, I see your, your point of view. We made a, we made a call based on the, the timeline and what we would be asking somebody to invest in, in making a response. But I think it's a, I absolutely see your perspective. I think it's a judgment call.
And, and as you know, Frank, a lot in government is, well, perhaps you don't know because you haven't had the experience of government, but I mean, it's perception of this is probably also a factor in my decision on this.
While I, I absolutely appreciate that, I, I respectfully disagree, but I certainly understand your, your point of view.
Frank, for the different fees that are charged, I saw what came over, which is a sliding scale based on the age of the receivable. I guess for me, I just don't understand it. Is that standard across the industry? Are different companies charge different amounts? How is that arrived at?
So it's, it is standard across the industry for it to be a sliding scale based on age, yes. Whether these specific numbers will hold up, I mean, frankly, we asked CCM to throw a dart in the dark because we truly don't know, they don't know what it's going to cost them to collect these and we don't know what they're going to collect. So we said for the pilot, go with as much information as you have, having taken a peek at the data and knowing what you know from your experience as a, as a collection agency based on age. And this was not their first offer. We asked them to adjust it and they did willingly. So, you know, again, we, we are truly throwing darts in the dark on this.
Just to add to the darts in the dark, I would like, the amnesty is going on now, so we don't even have a sense of what will be paid or not paid via the amnesty. So that would change the composition of the remaining debt as well.
That's, that's correct, yeah. I've, I've not seen any gratification of the age of fines that are, that folks are taking advantage of in the, in the amnesty. We know the roughly the total amount, which, you know, it's been a healthy amount of activity, but we don't, I don't know the gratification of the age of this.
And Tim, since you jumped in on amnesty, Frank, can I, I need to ask you this question. At what point are you going to remove the deceased people from the amnesty list? There's a lot of deceased people on that list.
Yeah, there are. I mean, there's a question, given the, given the age of some of those receivables there is, I'm not sure how the city would efficiently parse that or maybe across database that we could go. If the county death records were in, in a form that we could index against our database. It, we want to do it in a way that was efficient and no cost. President Hudson, but it's absolutely something that we can look at.
Okay, because I'm getting, I had a lot of complaints over the weekend about people's dead grandparents.
Yep, understood.
It's just one question, Frank. I express this concern to Counselor Rudd. This goes back to a question I was asked, I believe by Counselor Hogan on Wednesday. It's just a bit of a point of concern for me. He asked a question about essentially what, what be fairness of the RFP, you know, relative to this company that is doing the pilot program. It was asked if they would be seen to have an unfair advantage when the RFP went out and the answer was no. You know, I'm, I'm trying to understand how that's not the case.
Yeah, it's a, it's a fair question. I don't see them having it because the data that we derive from the pilot will become the basis of the RFP. So the, anyone who chooses to respond to the RFP will actually be in a better position to respond because someone else will have done the work of establishing what's collectible and what isn't collectible. And they'll have a better picture of what our receivable stratification actually looks like. So I would suggest that the RFP will actually be a little more clear than if we had issued it now, really knowing much about the.
Sorry Frank, excuse me for a minute. Can, can, can we mute ourselves here, please? Thank you.
I think what we've asked CCM to do frankly is to make an investment of their time and efforts not knowing what their return is going to be. And, and they, they have no idea whether they're going to get a return or not. Once they've done that, everyone else who responds to, if we choose to go to a third party, everyone else will have the advantage of the time and effort that they put into the pilot.
Frank, one other question alongside what Counselor Bay has mentioned. So in other words, this is like an, be an informal agreement that this information wouldn't be proprietary, right? I mean, they wouldn't just, they wouldn't just own it, we would own it too? How's that work out? I mean, is this, I mean, if it, if it's an informal agreement, which it is, correct?
No, it'll be a, it'll be a formal agreement. We'll enter into a formal agreement and we will, they will, they'll, we'll know what they collect based on the reports that they provide us back.
So all their information that they garner from this is theirs or ours? What are you talking?
And the collectability is ours. And they will, they'll, they're determining if the, the, I guess I'm not clear, Counselor Hogan, on which information you're speaking of. The underlying data is ours. We provide it to them, they attempt to collect on it and then they report back to us what they were able to collect and what they weren't.
Okay, and their methods and all that, that's theirs, that isn't ours, obviously, right?
That's theirs, yes.
But I mean, this is all methods that they're developing as, I'm wondering where they got the data, like as far as how they determine what, like with Counselor Green's question, how they determine what they would charge and all that.
I, I, I'm speculating and I'm not sure if anybody from the company was able to, to join us today, but.
Yeah, I'm on Frank, Jeremy Kelly, General Counsel.
Okay, you are, great. Perfect. Do you want to talk about how you came up with percentages?
Yeah, you know, honestly, it's kind of a layup for the city. We, we generally in the, in the industry have percentages, as you had already spoken about, based on age of the debt. The amount of information we have in terms of who owes the debt are big factors. This, frankly, a lot of it's, as you can imagine, very, very, we're, we're not going to make anything really in the pilot. This is, this is largely uncollectible. Some of it, hopefully, the more recent stuff where we have more information could potentially be collectible. So we tried to generate a range that's similar in other arenas. And as Frank already said, it's, it's kind of a layup. We, we went as low as we could. I mean, if you were to send out 50,000 notices on some of these and spend $50,000, you would definitely not get that return. There's a lot of information. There's no address, there's no phone number, there's maybe just a license plate number. Some of it's multiple years old. And so we're going to try to assess on the older stuff if there's really any collectability whatsoever and then try to take a shot at the pilot with some of the younger stuff with more information and see, see how much of it's collectible. I know that's, that still sounds kind of confusing, but it's a, it's a very difficult type of debt with the age and the amount of information that we have.
As far as the layup goes, Mr. Kelly, I think a layup would probably be maybe collecting from students from Syracuse University and LeMoyne and all that. I mean, you're, you're, you mentioned that you don't think you'd make much money in the pilot, but then I would have to ask why even do it then?
Well, because we're a local company. I just, I mean, we, we, we love to have a good relationship with the city. We were born out of BHG, I don't know if you know Bankers Healthcare Group in 2013. And the point of, of CCM at that time was really to do, was to, it's a great ringtone, was to do collections differently, to, to be, to protect the brand, to be people first, to not kind of be a hammer and to really be, find solutions for people and do collections in a different way. What we found doing that for BHG when we were born out of that company was that it worked. We were more effective at it and we've added clients. We were, we do a ton, because you had asked us earlier, we have a lot in the healthcare space, a lot in the fintech space, a lot in the medical space, but we are moving into government space and, and potentially with the federal government and getting on the GSA schedule and doing some more municipalities. And for us really to be a Syracuse company, to have a relationship with the city of Syracuse is important to us. And we'd love to, love to be a part of what the city's doing and we thought maybe this was a good way to, to get to know you guys and help out. And obviously, we'd like that relationship to grow if possible, but that's why I do it. We're a Syracuse company, we wanted to start working with the city of Syracuse.
How's that building going over there, Mr. Kelly?
Well, slow. We, we, we obviously had to shut it down after COVID and the whole world changed. Our whole company moved home in terms of BHG and, and hasn't come back yet. So I think the ownership's going to make a call pretty soon on when we can get started again.
Okay, so you, so you want to move in the municipal arena and so obviously you have availed yourself of information from other municipalities, correct? Or?
What do you mean availed ourselves some information?
Well, I mean, you found out how they did things in other municipalities, right?
Oh, absolutely, yeah, yeah. And, and we, we, we have a good finger on the pulse of how the collection space works everywhere. Our CEO, who couldn't be on the call today, he's the president of New York State Collections. He, he's, he's been around the industry for, for a long, long time. And obviously, I think you guys know, I just, some of you might know, I just came from the DA's office and I'm getting my, my head around it too. But, but Jake Corleone, our CEO, is, he, he knows collections inside and out. And whether it's municipal or private, he's, he's got a good handle on it.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly.
So Frank, I've got a question for you. So with economic impact that COVID has brought upon everybody, I'm wondering of the, when, when this decision was made of people, what was the ability to pay into consideration in a sense? And how were you able to reconcile that?
Honestly, Counselor, I, I think in a different world, we might have done it differently, but the reality is we started planning for amnesty and third-party collections long before the pandemic. We, we started, we had started the plan to do amnesty in the current budget year, actually in the, in the middle of the last budget year. So this has been, the planning for the amnesty portion was in process for, you know, long before COVID. And collections just happens to be, having the, the collections at the end of the amnesty period is just part of how amnesty works effectively. So, you know, if we hadn't had the plans in place in retrospect, would we have done it in a different year? Sure.
But wouldn't you say, wouldn't you say the timing is kind of off a little bit? I mean, it's not bad, but the timing.
Yeah, I, I, I wish the timing could have been different. Unfortunately, we had actually budgeted for this revenue this year. So there, this, the, but the, the current year budget that we, that the council passed included revenue from amnesty collections and an increase in the, in the fines. And that was, that was long before we knew, not long before, but during the same timeframe as when we knew that there was going to be an impact for COVID, before the projections became solid. So it was already built into the budget. And the reality is, and I don't know Martha, if you have any current numbers, but amnesty is working.
Amnesty is also a break. I mean, I personally thought amnesty made it easier to do, or amnesty, amnesty became easier to do with a major financial crisis, but it is a challenge for people in their everyday life too, but they're also having what they owe cut in half or more, depending on the situation sometimes. So it can be an opportunity to actually get rid of the debt at the same time. That said, I, I want to keep it moving, but I know the auditor had a comment or question if you could debrief. Is Nader on the line?
Just want to mention, follow-up from what I had mentioned the other day about creed and reciprocals and the liens to see if that's being considered. I believe the, the reciprocals are in place or were in place and creed clearly, it should give the administration some further information. And then the other factor is again, if we're going with a contract, if you all in the council decide that you want to do this with, where are we with ban the box again? So those are my three points. Is that brief enough, Counselor Rudd?
Counselor, or Auditor Maroon, I did not, I didn't hear you first, do I apologize? There's some static on the line, but in terms of ban the box, anything that goes through our normal procurement process, whether RFP or to contract, has ban the box language in it. We've, we confirmed that after your audit and the questions that were, that were brought up because of the audit. There is some question of items that are procured outside the normal process. So if it happens on waiver and if we don't use the city standard contract and we need to, we need to address that and fill that gap. So, and, and ensure that those are. But the vast majority of our contracts and, and RFPs go through the normal process and include ban the box language.
Thank you, Frank. What, the business, the, any waiver, waivers are subject also to the legislation, as you probably were. It's really, the council passed an ordinance for ban the box. It's up to the council to make sure that even on waivers, as well as other RFP proposals that go out. The problem that I'm seeing with the proposals, however, is that they go out and somebody will send back a form that's signed, but there's no verification and not seeing any documentation for applications or anything other than somebody signed a document. Unlike when they're asked for certificate of liability and insurance, that, those documents are provided with the information included in it. So just as, as something else that we can do to assure the fact that we're meeting the spirit of the, of the law is that, that the ordinance, and the ordinance is that we're asking for documentation other than just somebody signing it, because then there's no follow-up. And the two points I brought up before, I'm sorry you didn't hear me, was the issue of the utilizing the creed software and the reciprocal arrangements. That would tell you, and I, I would imagine, I don't know this for sure, but I also would imagine from the New York State vehicle registration, et cetera, we might be able to compare, to see about death information and deceased. That might be a possibility. But clearly, the creed and the reciprocal arrangements we had would make those aged fines or aged tickets more current information, I would think.
Okay. This is Martha Maywalt, First Deputy Commissioner of Finance. That is something that we can look into. We do have the mechanics in place to send and retrieve information from the DMV. So we can look into aged tickets, aged unpaid tickets and what, what we can do there with creed. I know, I know it is.
As we go forward, I think we want to evaluate the process of the new tickets and what we do, whether we register them in a way with that system. I think.
But even to mitigate, but even to mitigate the cost for the pilot and/or ultimately an RFP, the cost to the taxpayers, it would seem to me to use the creed system currently to, to go through the, the records that we currently have. That was the purpose of getting creed established a few years ago. So it's not about so much going forward. That'd be great, but I think before we engage the taxpayers' money to, to pay for a, a company or an RFP process, we should vet deals properly first. And also the reciprocal.
I'm assuming, I'm going to assume Auditor Maroon, that someone in the previous administration, when they installed our ability to access the system, made administrative decision and we can certainly evaluate that decision again. Was not built into, the two-way communication was not built into the way they implemented the system, but as, as Martha mentioned, we will absolutely reevaluate that.
I appreciate that. And I think that, again, I think before you go out to bid or to pilot, you should try to run the system. I think you'll find that there, you'll have better data and it'll be less costly with Mr. Kelly and his group or any potential RFP.
We're able to get, the, the data that we're able to get is out of the system, is, I think, full and complete. I, I think what we're talking about is, is the city feeding its information into the system and what subsequent benefit we would get from that.
Yes.
That's good, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, and I don't, and, and we, again, the, the, the previous administration made a decision not to utilize the system that way. Well, we will absolutely reevaluate that.
I could provide you the answer to that question offline.
Alrighty, offline.
Okay, we're going to call them all ready, 13 and 14 will do an executive session. Thanks.
Thank you. Counselor Green and Counselor Allen.
Thank you, Madam President. We have item 19 and it's ready unless there's any questions on it.
Very well, Counselor Green.
Thank you, Madam President. I have items 20 through 23.
On, I'm sorry, on 19, can we just, is there anybody who could speak to the current status of whether there's any delays on getting? I had one concern from a property owner who was saying that there's sometimes delays and that that might be a problem processing the rental registry certificates. So just to the extent there are or aren't delays, could you comment and just describe potentially any problems you might see that would come with this sort of addition to the weight of the rental registry?
One thing I, so I'll turn it over to Jake, I guess, who's probably the right person to talk to that. But one thing I will just point out, so this is going to implement it as of November 15th. And the reason we're doing that is anticipating that there will be, you know, potentially a, maybe a flood of applications to give codes a little bit of time to ramp up, to make sure they have the process that, to eliminate a potential delay there. But, but to the overall question of codes and delays, I'll, I'll turn it over to Jake or Commissioner Collins.
Yes, Counselor, this is Jake Dishaw, Director of Code Enforcement. Apologies, I do not have video available right now, but I can speak to that. So there are no current backlogs or delays. The, the major problem is most of the people that are, are not in compliance just typically haven't applied. We have increased our compliance rates up to 40% currently compared to 25% last year. So we're trending in the right direction and we, we've seen significant results from our last push of notifications that we did in February that you're all aware of. But if we do get a flood of applications all at the same time, we will do our best to work through that. And we're planning accordingly to have the staffing and capacity to do so. But more importantly, this ordinance will protect and strengthen our ordinance and, and, you know, hopefully encourage people to get on the registry. That's the, the main thing that we're trying to achieve here to get healthier housing for our constituents.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Green.
So for items 20 through 23, those are ready. If there's any questions from any of the counselors. Okay, thank you, Madam President.
Parking one that just came from the clerk a little while ago, that was saying the total is 185, but the individual amounts are add up to more than that, but they can only spend total 185. So one could be lower, one could be higher. Is that? one could be lower, one could be higher. Is that what it, it's saying?
Corey, can you speak to that?
Catherine, Catherine is the one that raises me at the end of last week. Catherine, are you able to chime in of what the original one said and what, what has been changing? I mean, there's no increase in cost.
Yeah, sorry about that. I had to hit the mute button. The, um, the issue is that there, we're amending the original contract to add the four months, which had original totals. And apparently when the invoices were processed, when we did this before, it wasn't clear. So I worked with, um, the Tiger team to figure it out without, um, making it too complicated. Um, so the total amount for the four months is not to exceed 185,000. Um, and Jennifer Detti gave me what she had as the breakdown of the number per garage to be added to that total. Um, but because, um, just because things happen, I put in that in case there was a problem and one garage was more than the other, because it's just estimated costs, that they have the ability to just, um, they can, they can swap it between the garages because otherwise if they got a overpayment for the garage, one garage and the other one, but they had money, they couldn't spend it because it would be written, um, weird. It's a very, it's a weird accounting process. I don't do accounting, but I did my best with it so that they had all the authority to spend the 185, which is what was in the original request.
Okay. Cause it, the confusing part to me is that you can spend up to 130,000 for the one garage and 86,000 for the other garage, which adds up.
It's just the, it's the, that's the breakdown of the total. Um, yeah, it's just the breakdown of the total because apparently it was confusing when we did Republic. It was confusing for the Tiger team, I think when they're setting up the POs for them to, uh, do the calculations for what was supposed to go with what invoice. And again, I don't do the invoices, but I get the complaints that the ordinance doesn't allow them to pay the bills. So I did the best I could.
When you say that's the breakdown of the total, that still confuses me more because 130 plus 86.
It's the breakdown of the 185 is what she gave me.
130 plus 86 is not 185. It's a lot more.
There's a $576 left over from Laz, apparently. There's $576 left over. We can go back to the original one if you want. I just had to work with them.
Yeah, yeah, I can, I'll, let me touch base with Alicia and Jenna and, and figure out why that math doesn't add up. I'll, I'll do it before 1 o'clock. I'll do it right.
It's because, Corey, I think it's because they, what Jenna sent in her email was that there's $576 left of the amount or something. So she may have included that in her total from the last.
Yeah, the difference is more than 576, the two numbers.
Can you find out and get back to us by 1 o'clock, please?
Yes, will do.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Madam President. Those are my items.
Thank you. Counselor Panayagla.
Good afternoon, everyone. I have item number 24 issuance of RAN, uh, RAN on behalf of the Syracuse City School District. If there's no further discussion, the item is ready. Hearing none. Moving on.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Connie.
Thank you, Madam President. I have items, uh, 25 through 30. I believe all of those are ready unless there are further questions. No? Okay. Those are all ready.
Thank you, sir. Counselor Majoke.
Thank you, Madam President. I have item, uh, 31 through 33. All of them are ready. I believe because I received a couple of emails today that explain everything that we're looking for. Unless if Auditor Maroon has any question, uh, everything is ready here.
Those are all set. Thank you for the time and, um, appreciate it.
All right.
All righty, hearing none. Counselor Allen.
Hi, thank you. I'm going to have items 34 through 39. Um, they were all ready except for, I believe, is it 38, Michelle, that you wanted to withdraw?
Yep, 38, that's correct.
Okay, so we'll withdraw 38, but all the other items are ready.
All righty. Thank you, ma'am. So with that, that is our study session. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
Executive session.
No, no, we got to go to executive session. Okay, so I'll see everybody in executive session soon. All in favor?
All right.
I'll see everybody in a brief 13 minutes.
Okay.
Thank you.